We're good.
Good evening, everyone. Officially called this meeting to order, the first meeting of 2024, first meeting in January, the Mount Vernon City Council. And after we get called to order here, I'd like to check to see if there are any agenda additions. And I think we have one name to add to item D two, Michelle Omar. Is that the only agenda item that we need to switch?
Correct.
Okay. With that one addition, any other questions about the agenda?
That's adding her to the...
She's already on the board.
She's already on the board, and she was a renewal as well.
Okay. With that addition, I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second or...
Wait, no, of the agenda in general.
Moving second to move forward with the agenda with that one addition, item D two. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are agenda set. I want to start the communications part of the meeting out with the introduction of Councilman Deb Herman. And before I forget, I want to pass on my thanks very much for your service to the to the community. I enjoyed working, serving with you. A grateful community appreciates your years of service not only here, but also on Spelman. I enjoyed working with you there, so.
Hey, Tom, we just keep following each other around.
That's right. He went to Colorado, too.
Well, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not going anywhere. I was just telling Chris, I said, there's something about a little one-year-old baby in Iowa that kind of tons of grandma's hearts. So I just asked Tom to give me a few moments to make some comments. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve the community of Mount Vernon for the last seven years as your councilperson. I greatly appreciate the chance to gain and strengthen relationships and also to contribute to the culture of positivity and trust within the city operations as well as within the council and the larger community. I'm very proud specifically of the accomplishments of the Housing Commission, bringing online the LBC, planning for the pool project, totally, wholly, providing a method to celebrate diversity, navigating COVID. And oh, you know, we had this little windstorm that happened. Yeah, there's a lot of things, you know, you look back and it's like, wow, yeah, that was a lot. So as most of you know, or will soon learn, the work of the council is never done. And I wish you much luck and continue the good work. And it's, again, been a privilege. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
If I may, how about forwarding that to Nathan Countryman, just so you can quote it.
Can do, minus the stem.
Appreciate that. Again, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is open to communication is part of the meeting. And if there's anyone here to address something that's not on the agenda, otherwise we'll wait to that to that point in the agenda. You can speak at that time. But is there anybody here to speak to anything? Not on the agenda. Otherwise, we will move forward to the consent agenda. We've got two items, council minutes and LVAAS departments. Any questions are coming forward with that?
I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented with the added name to item two.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
No, second.
Cut mark. Moving second to move forward to consent agenda with one addition. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Moving to public hearings, section E. First item is open the public hearing, which I will officially do now. On the relocation of certain unspent proceeds of general obligation capital loans notes, series 2022, the city of Mount Vernon, basically Fourth Street, Fifth Avenue, water main project to the police department. Anything to add to that?
No, we've discussed this now for the last couple meetings, but just change orders and equipment. We knew our margins were small when we started that project. So not that Fourth and Fourth Street, Fifth Avenue water main is going to go away. It's just going to have to find a different funding stream in the next couple of years.
This is part of the project still more visible than the water main project at this point. Will 196 cover it?
Yes. Well, as long as no more tinge.
For 2024 now, we said that on down to 2024.
They're pouring the final concrete next week, so shouldn't be any more surprises underground.
Does anyone here from the public to address that issue since we're still in public hearing at this point? If not, is there anybody on Zoom?
Nobody on.
Okay. If not, I will officially close the public hearing, move to item G one, which is the resolution for approval. Questions about it, otherwise we move forward to that and then do a roll call over.
I would move approval of order in 20 dash two dash 2024 A.
I'll second.
Thank you, Paul and Scott.
No way.
Nope.
Yeah.
Yeah, G one, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you catch that, Paul and Scott?
Joe.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
That's the resolution passes. Moving on to the public hearing. Officially opened the public hearing on the ordinance amendment to the comprehensive plan and official zoning for all the lots in the Stoner Plaza 10th edition, city of Mount Vernon, C two, general commercial to mixed-use corridor. So an explanation in the packet. Any further questions about it or anything else to add?
No, like I said, this has probably been one that we've been talking about for four years. But this is the CHI Wood Modernity House complex, but will be Glen Street extended to the east.
Cottonwood Real Investments. Official name.
Speaking of the housing commission.
It's the only reason you can get off now is because that's...
Check that.
Anybody from the public wishes to speak to that? Otherwise, I'll officially close that public hearing on E two and we'll move on to F one, that ordinance.
And I would approve of ordinance one dash two dash 2024 F.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
No, second.
And if we're ready to vote, roll call, please.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
That motion carries. Think we're on to E three. Public hearing on the ordinance, ending the comprehensive plan of establishing zoning classifications shown in the original map of annexed property, this is Mark of Mount Vernon. And I'll officially open that public hearing. And are there any questions of staff about that? Or anybody here from the public wishes to address that part?
I maybe don't recall it, but this is not from the public, obviously. Was there, and maybe this was part of the conversation, I'm just not remembering it. Is there a reason that the one parcel is going to be zoning ag and the other business park?
So the sliver that would be connected to or that is owned by the Wadges is being treated as ag now. That is the fallback zoning designations. On any time that the city annexes property in, it would come in as ag unless there's an agreement between the city and the individual property owner as to what they would prefer that property to come in at. And that's what happened on the property with the larger parcel. Obviously, their plans include uses that would typically be considered in a business park. So as opposed to annexing the property and then turning around and having to go through the zoning process, the state allows you to do it kind of all at once.
But that portion isn't obviously intended for business park use?
On the door side?
The sliver that...
No, 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 no.
Okay. That was the only question that I had.
It is, it is. Because the state does not allow cities to leave property as the connecting tissue to this whole thing. So just treating it as being used right now is the most sensible.
Anybody from the public have comments about E three? Public hearing. Officially close that public hearing then. And if you are ready to, I think with your motion on that.
I'll motion to approve ordinance one dash two dash 2024 E. Admitting Mount Vernon comprehensive plan establishing zoning classification property being annexed into the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Moving second to move forward on F two, that zoning change. Think we're ready to call a roll?
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And Lisa.
Yes.
That motion passes. Think we have gone through F one and two and G one. I missed anything or are we to mayoral proclamations? And I think I sent one to you to next month, or next meeting, I should say, next meeting. So you've got that on the agenda. No other whole business. A motion is for approval. We've got a claims list that Marsh has sent out for staff to do. Any questions, Marsh on that?
Since it sounds like none, I would move approval of the claims list as presented.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Any mark? Moving second to move forward with today's claims list as presented. This is a voice vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now to J two, discussion consideration downtown streetscape design contract with JEO Consulting. And we've got contact with JEO. What do you want to start here?
This is actually just kind of the final step. The council has designated JEO as the engineering firm of record going through the RFP process. The only item of note, the original proposed contract price was 364,000 or just over that. And it's moved to 399,500. That's really at the behest of staff, wanting to make sure that they have accounted for enough individual meetings in the community. And if we don't end up, I mean, if we have great turnout and we don't have to do that in the future, great. I'm going to err on the side of caution and make sure that we, for them, that they have enough to use plan. I foresee numerous groups wanting to discuss this process and what this area is going to look like. So we're just making sure that we got our ducks in our own game instead of trying to change orders later on.
This has been discussed with CDG representation or the retail committee. They know that it's coming.
Yes. They all know that it's coming. There's a downtown design group. They've all been made aware of it. And they'll be one of many groups, I think, that have an opportunity to sit at the table. There will be one kind of central steering committee that will work through this program. And then multiple opportunities for these other established groups to get together with a consultant. Consider the downtown business owners as their own group kind of by themselves.
That will be key, communicating to as many people as possible as early as possible to make sure we get their input. Jeremy is here. Do you have anything to add to it?
Not really, as I was here to answer any questions, should they arise if you had a specific... I'm just excited to get started. Yeah, the first step is visioning, getting all those thoughts together, you know, from the steering committee and all the, you know, stakeholders that need to be involved in this process.
So like a couple weeks from now? I mean, yeah, tomorrow. So, I mean, I joke, but do we, and it might have been included that I missed it. Do we have a timeline?
There is a schedule. It's on the second to last page of the contract from notice to proceed. So after we receive that, I think visioning is the first phase and it takes about three months. But that's including initial concept sketches and a bunch of meetings in there. So that's our workshop with all of the downtown businesses, you know, where we can start, you know, picking out what we want things to look like and pretty pictures and whatnot. So it's not going to be three months and then one meeting. It's going to be a bunch of meetings across three months.
I would move approval of the proposed contract with JEO Consulting for the downtown streetscape design.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Paul and Scott.
And I would just add an appreciation for asking for more upfront rather than going to change order around. I think it's better for everyone. So thank you, Scott.
That's a good point there. Moving second to move forward with the JEO streetscape design as the most recently adjusted work meetings. Up front, any other comments or questions?
No. Again, I appreciate looking forward, looking to those meetings ahead of time as that was really our number one, sitting and listening, hearing from JEO. We really appreciate how they were going to proceed with the meetings. That sounds great.
Want to set a very positive tone, a very welcoming tone and recognize that this affects the cultural community, so. Got a motion to move forward on that? Any other comments? Otherwise, if we're ready to move on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to J three, engagement letter with Alars Cooney, the CHI Housing Development. Four years of the works.
So Alders is our bond attorney. And we have basically what's considered a preferable plan with CHI Housing. What Alders will be doing and what your engagement letter does allows Alders to put all the parameters and rules to that development agreement that will be adopted by the council.
And this has been, I mean, they've done work first.
Yeah, so I've been here for seven years and they're dealing only two.
Yeah.
They're both out of Duvalin, so.
Yeah.
They don't fill us unless we use them.
At a minimum.
We've been busy, so we use them.
Yes. Like I said.
What drove that project from 45 minutes to 30?
Basically the tax credit program. So there's, when they started with that project in 45, they were applying for tax credits under one program. And that, when they did get funded, they moved on to the next. And they just kept searching for various projects. But ultimately, what's available in funding, what program is that they get the funding under who's the lead agency and who put us in this particular project. But in exchange for standards, not only did it drop the units, we got the, we and I got the first view of what they had proposed to build versus what they had talked about building originally. And it was completely different only because HUD allowed them to make some changes. So we had to kind of go back the other direction with them and say HUD may have, but we did not. And we have a vested interest in this project, so.
At this point, we should be grateful for the 30, not 1145.
I think the challenge with Mount Vernon, just in general, is the state will go through a marketing study when they, when they score these projects. That firm doesn't even come to your community. They just look at the market statistics and every time they do that, they come back with Mount Vernon saying that they, it's not needed. Well, it's not needed because nobody's here in that demographic anymore. They tend to move into Cedar Rapids, Marion. So and that was probably the most challenging part of this application.
Any timeline for our schematic? No, we're not to the design standards yet, but just a layup.
We've seen some renditions and we're getting, I think we're getting close to the latest rendition that we saw. Much, much better than the first one that we had. So I would say freezing.
Questions of staff about CHI Development Agreement? I will accept a motion and second to move forward.
I would move approval of the engagement letter with Alders Cooney as presented.
Second.
Second.
Moving second to move forward with the engagement letter of Paulus Cooney on the CHI Housing project. Ready to vote on that? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the same line as access agreement for CHI on that project.
You can't... One thing you can't do with federal and state programs is kind of a handshake deal. So the city is the entity that is putting the infrastructure in. The infrastructure will not be in at the time that CHI will enter construction. We've already told them that we would grant them access across the right of way or build them access for them to get to their property. And they came back and said, we have to...
It's going to be efficient.
Yeah, we have to actually put it in writing so that it will be accepted. So that's what they said, is creating them access during construction.
I'd move approval of the access agreement.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second? All mark. Moving second to move forward with the access agreement. Of the Cottonwood Real Apartments. Ready to vote on that? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. J five, the tuition assistance, for continuing yet, Officer Blanks.
So I've excluded the portion 6.9 of the personnel manual that identifies education assistance. It allows the city as administrator to approve up to $1,000 in a fiscal year for any one employee. It doesn't state that that's the limit. It just states that that's the limit that I can through. This is only the, in my seven years, this is only the second time that we've done this. But going back to Officer Blanks, we have an individual who has been in the police department now.
Over five years?
Yeah. So as we look at succession planning and trying to promote within, Doug and I have kind of gone over this more than me for the last couple of years. Just kind of talking about investing in an officer of this nature. And I think we've come to the conclusion that it's a safe bet if Officer Blanks decides to leave within that three-year period at the time that his last grant will be awarded to JEOs on those dollar amounts. So and if we get to an officer for three years beyond the time that he or she graduates, then we've got our money. Yeah, money's worth. So what is being sawed is $3,000 per semester for the next three semesters. That will come out of PD's budget, the accounting board there. And it crosses over, actually crosses over two principal years, so.
Mostly online, doesn't affect scheduling?
Correct, yes. It's an online program through Upper Iowa for his bachelor's program.
Well, we've talked a lot about not only succession planning, but the challenge that we face as a small community in retaining police officers. And we're seeing that played out south of here. So this, I mean, not that $9,000 is anything to sneeze at, but it's a nice, good investment in not only retaining an officer, but improving their skills, so.
Well, I think it's a good message that they recognize that the city is supportive of their continued education and continued development to provide professional policing in the community, so.
And from a purely selfish standpoint, it's going to make him a better cop.
Absolutely.
You know, if we can invest in that, let's absolutely do it.
Well, and realistically, if we bring in a new officer, it's, it used to be about 12,000. I think now it's about 15,000 to send him to the academy and get through training. So it's actually a bargain compared to that process.
About $1.35 per citizen, Mount Vernon.
Unless there are other questions or concerns, I would move approval of the tuition assistance program for Officer Blanks and the amount of $3,000 for each of the next three semesters.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second? Moving second to move forward with the tuition assistance for continuing yet for Officer Blanks. Ready to vote on that? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Additional durachol cleanup expenses.
I'd actually, he didn't get back to you, did he?
No.
I'd actually ask him to table this for now.
So moved.
Second. Moving second to table J six to the next meeting. Think he'll have the information?
I hope so. We're giving him an opportunity to relook at his numbers. Before we bring this back. It is going to cost more money. They did sit through all of the durachol debris that's remaining out there. So I expect fully that this is going to cost additional money, but we want to have them go through it one more time and make sure that, yeah, that everything correctly.
There are a few discrepancies on time and maybe some miscommunication on how that was given over a while. I want to talk to him before I said another.
Stay on, Elvin. That motion will afford to table J six, the additional durachol cleanup expenses. Think we need to vote on that? All in favor of that motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion table carries consideration of the next council meeting. It's on MLK Day and also caucus day, if I remember correctly. What is the rule of the group?
I was, I just forward, as, Mount Vernon is such a strong community civic duty in voting and we take pride in our voting. Caucus day being different as compared to other voting days, which does have a certain time, I believe, seven o'clock. I think it'd be a good idea if there's no other issues going on that we move that to a different date to allow everybody in here a chance to caucus, you know? I think we should give everybody a chance to, if so choose.
Councilman Engel did say he was not available on Tuesday. That doesn't leave me, you know, there. I'm open and willing to go with whatever the vote majority is, so.
I think between MLK Day and the caucuses, I think I'd be willing and encouraging to move it. And we know Craig can't make the 16th, so Wednesday, the 17th?
I can do that.
I can do that.
Push the marsh on minutes a little bit, but are you okay with that? No, you're not.
She's going on vacation the next day.
Then I would get done anyway.
But Stephanie did not weigh in either way, though. So is that Russell Snapp okay with that, with the Wednesday?
Yeah.
So are you making that motion when you started this?
So moved.
For the Wednesday, January 17th is our second.
Third.
Moving second to change the second meeting in January. I think there's going to be someone from the National Violence Group that I need to get in touch with. Human trafficking group to say, give them the right meeting date.
If they...
If they want to be, if they didn't want to be in person, and I gave our original meeting date, but I need to change that, so. Motion on the floor to change the next meeting's agenda, February 17th to Wednesday. Ready to vote on that? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. He's got the Monday, February 19th meeting. That's all action is needed.
That's President's Day and it's a staff holiday, so.
Wednesday, the 21st?
Tuesday. I know that was the day that Craig said he'd be out of town regardless of the date, I believe, so.
Oh, that's true. That one doesn't matter because he's going for both of you. So and since you're not leaving the next day, you'll go Tuesday.
Think I heard a motion for February 20th?
Yeah.
A second to that Tuesday, February 20th. Thank you, Paul. Moving second to have the second meeting in February, on Tuesday, February 20th, avoiding President's Holiday. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pay application number two for the sewer cleaning project.
This is a pay application amount of $91,564.76. It's actually a bargain because they've had to do it twice now.
You get it right.
They'd rather turn the camera on, I couldn't find their video. After the first, once they come back and do it again. No, actually, honestly, for the most part, it's gone fairly well. We've had a couple of individuals, I think, when those lines get pressurized, that it was in their line to get exacerbated by this process, but it worked, it's done very well.
I would applaud the group this time around on the communications that were sent to the houses affected that were much nicer and immensely more legible than in an astronaut. That was appreciated. And unless there are other questions or concerns, I would move approval of pay application number two for the sewer cleaning in the amount of $91,564.76.
Thank you, Scott, your second?
My second.
It doesn't mean any, is it hydrocleaner type of city?
The hydroclean does. We have a much simpler system, so they bring in a larger truck, there's a lot more PSI. Can clean larger lines. And we contract, when we run into situations like that, we contract with either hydrocleaner or the router or somebody, I think you've heard of Block.
How long does this service good for you, does this need to be done every decade or five years?
Depends on the line. When we go through this process and we line some of the sewers, they might be good for a little while. Older sewers might only be good every other year. We love our trees in Mount Vernon, which is great for the trees in USA. It's not nature, but really bad for sewers. So the older section of the town probably get a little bit more attention.
This is not only cleaning, this is scoping them with the camera so we can identify issues, ideally before they become big issues.
Yeah, you don't want to go and try and line a sewer that has offsets, you know, where they've settled and two pieces have sunk and there's, you know, a gap. So identifying where we have those types of issues, where we can line the sewer and if you've ever seen that process, it's incredible. It's basically lay a plastic pipe or heat a plastic pipe, like to heal the sewer line and have a new sewer line just inside of it, so. Yeah, you know, ideally, it might be something that the city takes a look at after we move to automated water meters. We can free up that staff time. But just know that a truck of that nature is, I don't know. Last time I went to purchase one, it was North Shore, $250, $200. If you're going to make a capital purchase of that nature, you're going to want to make sure that you've got the staff that can do it quarterly. But on the other side of that, though, is if we have to do it quarterly, do so many different sewers per year and contract that money out, you can see what it costs.
This is an address with me some time ago about public party lines, sewers. I'm assuming we don't have a lot other than Northland Highway one. Davis Park area, is there, is there much?
We have more than you think.
More than you think. So this is too big to bring up at this?
Yeah, so party line sewers are, or one more than one house are connected to an individual service line. A lot of times builders, especially if they own lots nearby, would save a few dollars on pipe and connect to one tap versus paying for two. We don't have as many as some communities, but we have more than probably we'd like to have. When we do identify them, if we go through like a sewer replacement, then we require them to create their own tap, but usually when it's a failure of some sort.
We're trying to stay within the scope of this sewer cleaning project of town. It's an issue that's out there, I guess. I think we've got a motion on the floor, pay application number two on the sewer cleaning project. If there are no other questions, ready to vote on it, all favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, no action, council operation and appointments. What is that about? Since this is kind of our reorganization meeting, I really like that the council members and mayor torn in earlier. I'd really want to operate as a group and bring up like five or six items for discussion and not to just any big changes, but just more of a communication thing about, I guess the first thing is how to get an item on the agenda. And yes, the agenda generally comes out of Chris's office, but after my first month or two as mayor, I think I had like one a quarter that I suggested that, you know, to get on on the agenda. But, you know, you had an agenda item for the pollinators project. You had one about the days and meetings and so on. But the council members feel comfortable enough to present agenda items in an early enough timeframe so they can get on the agenda. I mean, not going to get on on Friday afternoon probably, but before meeting. And by the same token, if some citizen has some hair about the, something that they would like to get on the agenda and if somebody from the council is willing to support that, that's fine. If they're not willing to support it, then it's a non-issue. But are we comfortable with getting agenda items in that type of format? This is for your information, excuse Marcus, a new person here.
Yes.
Moving on to, more and more you see closed meetings, Public Information Act. People deliberating by email, or organizations deliberating by email, just recognize, and that's obviously the, or, you know, meeting with two or three people in Gary's and then they meet in my parking lot with, about another motion and pretty soon it comes before the, it's already settled ahead of time. Recognizing the importance of public meetings and keeping citizens informed correctly here. But I have to...
And making clear that we take great pains to avoid those scenarios.
And I tried to send out an email that I make sure that it's labeled for information only. Do not, no deliberation, so don't reply all and all that. So I think as long as we're familiar with that, because the idea is not to have floating meetings, because you see school boards do it, you see small communities that run into that. And that's, if I remember correctly, that's something that we were personally liable for. It could be a, possibly get the, felt liable for that.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's something to be cognizant of. You know, really, I think where the courts have put their foot down as far as floating meetings is concerned is when you start talking about an issue that you know you want to come for a vote or you're actively having that discussion outside the public meeting. So I send the council my Friday notes every Friday. There's no discussion, but it's basically, here's what's happening. Now technically, those are open. And so I think that's the biggest warning that I can give you is if you're sending emails from your city account or using city equipment, there are circumstances where that's not public information, but they're viewed compared to things that are. So just kind of keep that in mind. If it is something that, you know, warrants a broader discussion or immediate discussion, there's avenues that we can go through to hold a meeting and let the media know, you know, we can hold a meeting in 24 hours, as long as 24 hours, no risk of getting so. I just err on the side of caution. Now, I've heard, you know, countless things after a meeting, after you've already voted on something and there's a little bit further discussion or something like that. It doesn't change the outcome of what was voted on. I don't necessarily encourage you to adjourn the meeting and then continue to discuss an item, but little things like that have typically been looked at as non-public or not prevalent to the agenda, but making a phone call, a paragraph, one on one discussion is probably the best avenue.
Chris has kind of referenced this, but also in the open meeting law, the council, I've seen this in organizations and the part of, you know, school board days and so on, the meeting after the meeting, you know, you three city council members corner Chris after this meeting, that doesn't look good. And I don't hear what you're talking about, this doesn't look good. And to recognize that when the meeting is done and Paul wants to talk to Chris about something, that's fine, and it can be city questions for that matter. But public sees this, the press sees this. We need to make sure that we don't engage in active meetings after the meeting, which is just another form of a floating meeting and it's a deliberation, even though you say you're not going to deliberate. Well, you're kind of deliberate. So I just want to point that out. One final item that I had, and if there's other items that council members want to bring up, that's welcome to you. But one commitment I made when I moved to this chair was that there would be some form of evaluation of city management. That's one of my responsibilities. And one of the things that I've asked council members is for their input and, you know, giving them time to provide them input, but asking for that input, giving it. I usually send out two or three forms that the League of Cities has of evaluation and that's, you know, eight pages and so on. A paragraph is just as valuable, with honest feedback, good, bad, or otherwise, is what I would look for. So hopefully council members feel comfortable doing that. And again, I don't want to make this a thesis for anybody's, but I think we need to have something like that documented so that I have something to have that meeting with Chris. And, you know, these have been good meetings so far and I'm keeping that way and I want to make sure that they don't become awkward and so on. But don't need any surprises either direction because, you know, Davenport City is going through three or four early retirees after a building collapse that just looks really shady. So I want to make sure that we remind you of that responsibility. That's going to come up here in the next couple of months or sometime soon.
And unless I'm completely missing the vote, this isn't in response to anything other than new council turnover, friendly reminders, okay, just want to make sure this isn't...
It's something that I should do.
Yeah, okay.
Something we hope, we hope.
Scott, are you feeling guilty about it?
No, I'm just...
No, but I'm starting to wonder.
I know, I was just wanting to make sure that there wasn't...
I was going to promise anonymity. Anonymity. He was anonymous.
Were you?
Yeah.
And Harsh, it's like, I didn't even have an opportunity to, I don't know.
Other things, and this is organizational meeting. Other things that we should bring up as to how we will work as a group. I think this has been drastic change in the past years, but.
One of the things I think is really important and I would say I probably had a slip up on a topic at one point or six over the, my time in offices. We need to remember that the public forum, public information session is not a diet. It's an opportunity for the public to, you know, bring something forward. If it's something that the mayor, not council, but the mayor believes we can give guidance or something like, we weren't aware of that issue, thank you, we're going to have staff look at it. That's the mayor's position to do that. And we really need to remember that because it can, it's not healthy for either party to have discussion in that.
Thanks for bringing that up. It's not appropriate to have a back and forth at that point because it's not an agenda item, whatever it is we're discussing.
Right, and we're back to open meeting rules at that point.
And even if that member of the public expects an answer and is totally wrong, now not the time to engage publicly. I mean, if there's a clarifying question, I might let that go of the speaker. But public comment is public comment and still your meeting is council. So thanks for bringing that point up about public comment. And I think we're as friendly to it as possible that we have early in the agenda. It's same place in the agenda, same meetings, same locations, same date, time and everything else, so.
And I appreciate that, the clarification that you give with it in that if it's an agenda, if there's an agenda item you want to speak to, wait for that. Because otherwise it can get real messy real fast, trying to remember who said what about this thing when it's an hour later on the agenda. So I think that's a good function. We haven't really had an issue with it, but every once in a while we have topics come up where people are very passionate and they want to go for a while. And like I say, I don't think we really run into it, but the reminder of the five minutes is always a good. And having some function for traffic and enforcing that is rarely a bad idea. But otherwise, I think we have operated well as a council and no more. Sure that will continue.
What's your...
Yep.
Getting it from the staff side, but, or rules of...
I think it's the, two things. Number one, I know it seems like, and it does get generated from my office, but the agenda is yours. Obviously, there are things that I work with every day that have to be done, but I don't expect the council person to come in and say, well, we need to be able to this item. But I don't typically allow individuals from the community to ask to have something placed on the agenda when they want to council champion. Or if it is necessitated by, citizens can request amendments to the code. They can, there are certain statutory items that they can make requests on, but as far as discussing particular items, I always kind of say, if you can find a council member, reach out to your council member and ask if they would want to champion that item, they can get that on the agenda. I would ask that you contact myself or Gloria about adding an item to the agenda. So, you know, we've had one scenario, for instance, we had a citizen ask to add something and there was a specific process that they needed to go through. And had they not, they would have been harmed if they chose to go further by not following that specific process that is set out in state law. So every once in a while, I mean, it's just, I can say, yeah, for sure, we can have that. And I have, and I'm like, all right, said, well, maybe do it this way so that they have the best chance of it for it. And the second, I think it's only happened a couple of times on here, but, you know, chief is in the audience for a reason. But just because this is public doesn't mean that it doesn't need to be civil. We've had a recent incident where we had what was supposed to be a very happy day for a family and an individual to celebrate turned into things that those children probably shouldn't have needed to hear. I think the council has always done a really good job of cutting those individuals off and asking them to leave. But don't be afraid, obviously, if there's unrast or unruliness, they can be asked to leave.
Well, luckily, that's something that we've read too rarely. But agree.
But I did almost ask you to walk up the parking lot.
Yeah, and I think that's important. It has to come from you for the directive on that.
It has to come from you for the directive on that, from that perspective. But, you know, I think there's a lot of things that we try to allow in a public meeting just to let the voice be heard aspect from that.
Saying it is significant, not saying it is significant, so. Any of your institutional knowledge, Paul, you might add?
Yes, you do. Well, now that you've asked. One thing I know, several council members at different times, they sort of trip on themselves because they're not sure of the basic rules of the motion and whatnot. I think it's important to know that items that are resolution or in ordinance are roll call vote. If it's a simple voice vote, the mayor handles that. You do not need to have all your discussion as a council prior to a motion and a second, when a motion and a second is made, that's not calling the vote, that's simply moving it forward to that next stage, we can have additional discussion after. And I think that we should all, you know, know that and be comfortable with it. Sometimes the value of having someone move it, you know, make that motion is if there's not a second, it's done, and that's part of the process of keeping things moving. If there is a second, then it moves forward through the process. You know, sometimes, over the last few years in my service here, I've felt like, you know, the auto button, yes, yes, because we happen to have things coming forward that we all agree with. But certainly in the past, and I think it's important that we all know going forward that part of this process is for us to represent the people that we represent and our, you know, our combined experiences and knowledge of the particular topics. And, you know, not every vote has to be unanimous, and we should feel comfortable in voting our conscience. And those are just kind of the things that, you know, we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with.
Thank you, Paul, that's on me. Any other things that we should be discussing about or make sure we're comfortable working as a council? I will probably tell you that maybe most times between meetings, I'll have a chat with Chris, usually a couple of questions, you know, should this be on the agenda, or what's the latest in this? And so on, obviously, no decision-making there, but I do catch up with city hall two weeks for that in-between meeting. There's nothing else there, move on to reports. Chris here, gone for League of Cities? No, I'm sorry, I CMA.
Will be gone. It'll just be part taken here by his mom.
I'm looking forward to the LBC talk next Thursday. We're kind of, just what happens with city business here, so I'll look forward to that. Take notes for that. Any other council reports? Mayor cited, just mentioned that next Thursday is a sustainability meeting, we try to do those every two months. The speaker is New Green Isle America Corps Speaker. Any feeling about committee assignments? I haven't talked about that specifically, but anything that, any group that people want to be involved with particularly, I'm just, like Scott, who's a mayor pro temp, Craig has been representative to Cornell activities and so on, but any, if you have a strong interest in any of these?
I'm happy.
You're happy, okay.
I know Deb was on Housing Commission. She was like liaison, I don't know.
She was a liaison in housing, she was a liaison to a certain extent with CDV, CDG. And then I believe Economic Development, but I'll go to double check. It would, we limit the amount of committee meetings that we have simply because we were running in a situation where two council members in the mayor knew a lot about what was going on on a particular item, and then the others felt somewhat left out of the discussion. So we just kind of replace that with the discussion item on the agenda and bring those things forward that way. Going back to Tom's comments about feedback, you know, I make adjustments based upon kind of what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing out of the council as far as to the agendas, to the way that we do various meetings. But again, I work at the behest of the city council, so if there are things that you would like to see going back the other direction, you just have to let us know, and we'll make those adjustments as well.
So then, you know, there are going to be questions that are regarding this, you know, we'll need liaisons and things like that, but I don't, you know, the restore preservation, you know, it's hard to have somebody from the city there. There are other places where we need to have something.
I don't think we need council member representation, I never hear a strong presentation or planning a zoning report adjustment. I mean, I go to those meetings once a year just to say thank you, and I'm gone, so. And housing, quite frankly, I've been kind of in limbo for a couple of years because it hasn't been in activity until now, so now there's some activity on a rental level for Alaby Housing. Single Family Homes is the next challenge, find some, something in the two-hundred fifty range for homes somewhere, that's probably going to be a new development, so working on that needs to happen. Anything else that needs to come before this open part of this meeting?
I would just like to say, Chris, thank you for the municipal funding. It would be really great if that's for public consumption, to get it out to the public.
This was actually in, I believe, a city's cityscape, I don't know, two thousand eleven or something like that. Every once in a while, I'll catch a diagram that the League of Cities will put out and try to get it out there. It just does a great job of putting city finances in a very basic explanation.
I wish I would have had this, my first meeting in two thousand, it wouldn't have taken me so long to learn all of this stuff. I really, I like it for members of council to be able to understand, but I also think it's important that the public, this is a wonderful opportunity for the public to see, to, you know, not just words, but sort of the whole visual, how it comes, because there's times where you talk in a meeting about the enterprise funds, you know, versus the capital funds, the general fund, and this just is incredible. I truly do wish I would have had it in two thousand, because it took a while.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I, city financing anymore is like a chemistry set. Throw a bunch of things in a bottle and see what comes out.
If you do it wrong, things explode.
Yeah. So, don't be intrigued, but yeah, as we come across those things, we like to try and share them. I know that a lot of you get the City State magazine, but every once in a while, want to kind of come back through, it hasn't been shared for a little while, and just have an opportunity to send it back out.
Thank you, Paul.
So thank you, sir.
Anything else that needs to come before the open part of this meeting? Not, I will adjourn the open session here tonight, and we'll come back in a few minutes after we clear the room to go into chapter twenty, exempt session for fully relations with the closed session, so note the time of-
You need a motion to go ahead and take closed session.
Okay.
So, second.
Paul's gone. Who's the second, did you go in closed session? If you go on that, I'll make that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?